Meeting to order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Becky, please do roll call.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Crone?
Here.
Councilmember Grove?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Here.
Agenda item D is open forum. Open forum is the time for anyone here tonight to address the council on any subject over which the council has the authority to act or on any item on the agenda other than a public hearing. Does anyone here tonight either in the council chambers or on Zoom wish to address the council at this time? If so, please approach the podium or raise your hand. And if you're participating via Zoom, please click on the raise hand icon under the reactions controls. After you're recognized, please state your name and address before making your comments.
Ramona Callender, 3250 Ashworth Road in Waukees, Iowa. The last time I was here, we talked about the traffic report for Kettlestone. Brad kindly gave it to me, did some checking with it, read it, turned it over to AI, all the stuff I could do, asked and called Andy when the traffic report was done, 2017, okay? At that time, the traffic study stated that Glacier Springs was the main focus for multifamily dwellings, but not in Kettlestone Lakes, okay? Described Kettlestone Lakes as high visibility, basically used for big boxes, retail region. Back in November or December of last year, a zoning committee was met, we came to it, and they wanted to change the zoning for the east parcel next to us on Ashworth to multifamily dwellings. Or, I'm sorry, they wanted to do the commercial zoning, okay, at that time. We specifically asked them if there was going to be any residential in that area. Nope, we're not putting any residential in that area. Okay, fine, great. The, I don't know if you guys realize how many apartments and multifamily dwellings you guys have rezoned since 2017 for Kettlestone and the other projects that are going on. Do you guys have any idea about that?
We do, but continue your comments and then we'll get back to you at the end.
Um, the plat shows, let me see, okay, density warnings. The study explicitly notes protections are 80% at density rate right now when this was drawn up. An increased density rate will compound three confusions: higher density from rezoning, more failing intersections, and on and on and on. Traffic liability, added apartments could boost daily trips on two-lane Ashworth. Study projects 211,000 with unclear egress, right or left turns. No updated study. In fact, Florence Drive, the new road that they're going to put in, isn't even in the traffic report. It's there, but it's never mentioned for traffic because they weren't going to put multifamily dwellings in, just big boxes. I'm requesting a new study done, just for the liability and safety of the city and my property. My driveway is like 15 feet from that road. What kind of buffers are we going to get for our privacy? Okay? We've done a survey, they've done a survey, and we're matched, okay? Their survey and our survey was matched, which means it's okay. This seems kind of petty, but I'm going to mention it anyway. I'm going to go through that tree line and mark my trees so they don't disturb them when they put in their road, okay?
I don't think that's petty. I think that's smart.
I'm sorry?
I don't think that's petty. I think that's smart.
I think that's a good idea, so. Anyway, I would appreciate some kind of buffer, some kind of gate for my driveway, okay, to keep people off my driveway. You get a road that close to another person's driveway, I don't care how many signs you put up, okay? There's going to be people out there that get on my driveway, all right? And to put a gate there, I hate to do it, but I don't want people on my driveway, okay? But it could cause more confusion when they get in that driveway and then they have to back out on Ashworth, you know? So, these are just little things. They could be big things.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll have Andy will provide you with the information in terms of rezonings around Kettlestone for multifamily. We can definitely share that in terms of number of rezonings. And then, in terms of the study being done in 2017, I want to comment, and we did mention this last time, but the study was done with the plan for the entire buildout. So, yes, the study was done at 2017, and yes, our population was different, and what was happening on Kettlestone was different at the time, but it was with the full buildout expectation for Kettlestone intended. And so, we were expecting quite a high level of traffic per the study. I'm going to have Brad add to that in a second. We'll discuss whether another traffic study needs to be done, but that will have to be discussed at another meeting when it's on the agenda. In terms of buffer, this is, you know, so what's on the agenda tonight is zoning, is a rezoning. Buffer is still to be discussed, and we're absolutely amenable to trying to make sure that we do whatever we can to keep people off your driveway, but that's still a process, still to come. But we will absolutely work through that and have a conversation with you about it. The only other thing that I do want to ask Andy if he can provide is information on traffic levels for big box and retail relative to multifamily, because my thought, and I want to make sure we have the appropriate data to provide, is that we're actually going to see lower levels of traffic with multifamily than we would have with retail. But I want the actual numbers, and so we'll get those and we'll share those. Brad, is there anything I missed?
No, I was just going to follow up, Mayor, relative to the traffic study that was completed. You're correct in that it was based upon the larger Kettlestone master plan that was completed in that general timeframe. However, I would note that we frequently do review that and update it as needed. So, I can coordinate with both engineering just to have them take a quick look at that. This particular area, it did actually reference in the master plan being a mixed use, where this use is proposed at, and included roughly a similar-sized area. However, the difference being in the mixed-use district, it's actually would have allowed for up to 30 units per acre versus, I believe, what's being proposed here is around 21, 22. So, certainly can have both take a look at that and just make sure that we're on track.
Okay, then it's still applicable.
If that be the case, then why during that zoning meeting back in last year didn't say that? All they wanted was commercial and residential, okay? That's what they based the rezoning on, okay? And then, come early spring, they had another rezoning committee meeting where they added this multifamily dwelling. This traffic study does not show Kettlestone having a lot of multifamily dwellings. And that's the reason why I think you better do another re-study, you know, personally.
We can certainly review and take a look.
Thanks. You going to notify me?
Yeah, we'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mona. Are there any other comments? Yeah, come on up. Again, just please state your name and address before you commence.
My name is Cody Crandall. I live at 245 Prairie Bluff Drive. Over the past several months, there's been growing concerns for pedestrian safety in Pinewood South. There's no crosswalks or traffic calming measures to make it safer for pedestrians. On Friday the 22nd, those fears came reality with a seven-year-old getting struck by a vehicle, and he's been in the pediatric intensive care unit ever since. It's shaken our neighborhood, and it makes it clear that the design of the street isn't going to be safe for children nor families. I'm asking the city to authorize a safety audit of Prairie Bluff Drive. Whether, what other, excuse me, sorry, whatever the solution ends up being, you know, we'll figure that out with the audit. And I'm thankful for the extra police presence in the neighborhood. There's been numerous reports for it, and that's fantastic, but it's not going to solve the root cause of an unsafe road. So, I'm thankful for that, but we also need to address the root cause here. And then, the closing comment, two days after the incident, the police department posted a statement saying, hang on, I want to do a direct quote, is thankfully all injuries up to this point, or all injuries so far have been minor. And he was actively in the pediatric intensive care unit while that was being typed. So, it's disappointing to see that level of apathy. It would have taken five minutes to check that fact before posting it. And also, I don't really think it's fair to assume the same amount of blame on a seven-year-old riding a 10-pound Razor scooter compared to an adult with a 5,000-pound SUV.
Agreed. We're all responsible for safety. So, in cases like this, I appreciate you bringing that to the council, because we will have a traffic study done on the street and a safety review. And I was looking, we will pass that information along to the appropriate person. And then, as soon as that's done, we'll have, at a work session, that information gets presented to the council, and we talk about whatever measures are recommended at that time. And so, it will be on a future agenda, I'm assuming, probably by October. But we'll have a traffic study done, and it'll be on an agenda for us to look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this up.
Are there other?
Joan Ross, 450 Southeast Rosenkranz Drive in Waukees. When you mentioned this accident, it brings to my mind, I think the motorized scooters are out of hand on the sidewalks in the streets. Last night, as I was coming down Florence, this was an adult with a small motorcycle on the sidewalk with a small child in front of them. Going down the sidewalk, a car is turning into that by the school administration, and the motorcycle had to swerve a little bit. Had he hit this individual, it definitely would not have been the car's fault. I don't know what we do about it, but I think there, and maybe parents need to educate their kids, and I agree. Those small kids on that vehicle, whatever you want to call it, is nothing compared to a pickup or a car. But they also have to be aware, when they are going down the middle of the street, they don't pay attention to stop signs. When they're on the sidewalks, they don't look, they do not move over for pedestrians. So, and more and more kids have them. But I will say, someone is going to be hurt very badly before, I don't know, someone takes notice.
Yeah, so scooters are an issue. Unfortunately, per state code, there's not much we can do to legislate it. And quite frankly, the options that we do have would involve citing children, which is not, it's not a solution. And so, we've asked that it be a state legislative issue. It hasn't been taken up yet by the legislature, but we have asked for them to address it at the state level so that we would actually have opportunities. One of the things we have discussed as a city is creating some sort of parent education campaign as a region. I don't know where that's going to go yet, but unfortunately, it is a statewide issue, and there's not much we can do from a legislative position right now, but we continue to work on it. Are there any other comment? Any hands raised on Zoom? No, there are no hands in Zoom. Okay, public hearing is closed. Or, open forum, sorry. We haven't gotten to public hearings. Item E is agenda approval. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? If you guys would like to be notified when it's on an agenda, if you could give, Andy, can they give you their contact information? Thank you. As there's no discussion, please vote.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Agenda item G1 is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance city of Waukees, Iowa by rezoning certain property from C1 and C4 to KRR, a parcel known as Giles' property. I now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any correspondence?
No, none has been received in the city clerk's office.
Melissa?
Good evening, Mayor and council. The owner and applicant is Bricktown Piper LC. The property is located south of Southeast University Avenue and east of Grand Prairie Parkway. It contains 51.68 acres in area. It is outlined in blue on the screen. The property is located within the Kettlestone corridor. The request is to rezone the property from C1, Community and Highway Service Commercial District, and C4, Office Park Commercial District, to K-RR, Kettlestone Retail Regional District for future commercial development. And the reason for the request is that it is in the Kettlestone corridor, so in order to go on with development, it needs to be rezoned appropriately for the Kettlestone zoning districts rather than our standard commercial zoning districts. Notifications have been sent out, and the rezoning signs were posted. Staff have not received any correspondence for or against this request. The concept plan, I'll go to that. So, this is the concept plan for the area. It shows a total of 10 commercial lots. And then, as part of the improvements to the property, Southeast Glacier Trail will be extended from the south out to Grand Prairie Parkway. The K-RR district permits typical commercial, retail, and office uses within the Kettlestone corridor. The Kettlestone master plan shows this property as retail, community, mixed-use, and office. So, the proposed zoning designation of K-RR will permit generally those similar uses as the retail, community, mixed-use, and office districts. That is all I have for the presentation. Staff recommends holding the public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant or their representative wish to address the council on this? Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions for this public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or raise your hand. If you're participating via Zoom, please click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Does council have any questions at this time? All right, and now the public hearing closed. Agenda item G2 is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance city of Waukees, Iowa by rezoning certain property from C4 to C1A, a parcel known as 15705 University. Now, to clear this public hearing open, Becky, have you received any correspondence? None has been received in the city clerk's office. Thank you. Melissa?
The owner and applicant here is MDBB1 LLC, Series 4. The property is located north of Southeast University Avenue and west of Southeast Waco Place. It contains 0.79 acres. It's part of a larger parcel, so it's the area outlined in blue of the larger square parcel that you see on the screen. The portion, sorry, the subject property is part of, again, part of that larger parcel, it was previously rezoned in 2020 from C-4 PD1, that's Office Park Commercial District with a planned development overlay, to C4 Office Park Commercial District and C-1A Neighborhood Commercial District. The applicant is requesting to rezone the portion of C4 area to C1A in order to expand the C1A area to accommodate future development of a building. That will include retail and restaurant uses. So, let me go to, this will explain it. So, this is the rezoning map. It shows the C1A portion is kind of the southwest corner, this area. And so, what they're proposing is to building that will expand past that line that is right there. So, in order to get that building that they're proposing, they need to extend the C1A area just a little bit further in order to do what they are proposing for development on that property. This is the concept plan. It shows a total of three lots and one outlot. Lot 2 is that area that's proposed to be rezoned to C1A. It includes one building. The uses include retail and restaurant. Lots 1 and 3 are zoned C-4. Those will remain C-4 zoning, and they are shown to include one building on each lot for office use. The outlot is located in the northwest corner of the overall development and will be used for stormwater detention. One full access is shown to provide access to the overall site off of Southeast University Avenue. The current comprehensive plan classifies the subject property as single-family residential, although the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff is comfortable with the proposed rezoning as it is compatible with the existing zoning of the property, and it's also consistent with the zoning of other properties nearby along University Avenue. Let me go to, so this is the portion, so the office building shown on the north, the furthest north side is what they're working on right now, and they have conceptual building elevations for that building only. We have not seen anything for the other two buildings. So, that is what it's proposed to look like. I believe that is it. Staff recommends holding the public hearing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant or their representative wish to address the council? Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions for this public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls. Please state your name and address before making your comments.
My name is Mark Christian. I live at 1400 Southeast Rosewood Court in Waukees. I don't know if this is the right time to discuss this piece of it or not, but if you can bring back the proposed layout of the... So, one of the things that they're going to put a restaurant in there, I don't know what kind of a restaurant it would be, but one thing that concerns me is they have a trash enclosure that backs up to my, the back of my property. Very early in the morning, you know, probably 5, 6 o'clock in the morning, we can hear the trash trucks come from the other side of university, picking up the trash. You hear them clanging into the trash receptacles, dumping it into the trash trucks, and then the beepers as they back up to move out of there. And that's going to be right in the back of my property. So, I don't know if there's any way to move that over to like the retention pond area and away from the housing that is around nearby the development. And there's not much, it doesn't look like much for trees that back up behind that one office building onto the residential area either.
Perfect. Thank you for coming. Melissa, there is a tree buffer, but can you speak to that? And then, we'll address the trash enclosure question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
So, this is just a conceptual plan. At the time of site plan, we will require a full landscape buffer along all of those north, east, and west sides of the property. I believe the reason they weren't showing one with this east side was that, and also the west side, kind of on the southern portion, was that there was already existing trees there. So, I think they were planning on counting those. But I think some of them might have been removed since, and we will have to look at that when we do the site plan to make sure that we're still providing the proper landscape buffer there.
And every single one of those circles along the north side and the top of the east and west is a tree. Is that a tree?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. So, we'll have that portion during the site plan, but there will be a landscape buffer that's required. And so, more to come on that. In terms of, can you point out where the trash enclosure is?
I think he's talking about the east one. Don't know. Is that the, okay, yeah, that one right there.
Okay. So, that normally is discussed during site layout. And so, since this is zoning, we won't be able to address that tonight, but we're going to take your concern down, and we'll be addressing that during site layout. And we can definitely keep you informed on that. Any other questions? There are no hands raised in Zoom? Any questions? Okay. All right. I now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G3 is a public hearing on plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for Southeast LA Grant Parkway and Southeast Esker Ridge Drive Traffic Signal Project. You are here, Rudy. You're hiding in the back this time.
You know what that means, right?
It's money?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. All right. And now, to clear this public hearing open, Becky, have you received any written correspondence?
No, none received in the clerk's office.
All right. Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members. Up on the screen is the map showing the location of this project. It's at the intersection of Southeast LA Grant Parkway and Southeast Esker Ridge Drive, also the entrance exit to Timberline School. This is an existing traffic signal that's out there today. We're converting that to a permanent mast arm traffic signal, so includes all the necessary work to conform that conversion. This is in our approved CIP with a total budget of $300,000. We do have a completion date of August 3, 2026. Happy to take any questions, but staff recommends holding the public hearing for this. It's pretty straight.
Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions? If so, please approach the podium or participating via Zoom, click on the raise hand icon. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Council have any questions at this time? And now, to clear this public hearing closed. Agenda item H1, consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance city of Waukees, Iowa by rezoning certain property from C1 and C4 to KRR, a parcel known as Giles' property. This is an introduction and first reading.
Introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading and title only.
Second.
Melissa?
I have nothing further to add. Staff recommends approval of the first consideration of the rezoning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Agenda item H2, consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance city of Waukees, Iowa by rezoning certain property from C4 to C1A, a parcel known as 15705 University. This is also an introduction and first reading.
I introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading and title only.
Second. Melissa?
I have nothing further to add on this one either. Staff recommends approval of the first consideration of the rezoning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item H3 for Southeast LA Grant Parkway and Southeast Esker Ridge Drive Traffic Signal Project, H3A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost have been filed with the city clerk for review on request. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Any comments? Please vote.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item H3B, consideration of approval of a resolution awarding contract. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Up on the screen, you can see a summary of bids that were received on August 26 just last week. Of those four bids received, you can see the apparent low bidder, Iowa Signal, out of Grimes, Iowa, was the apparent low bid, approximately 10% under our engineer's estimate for a dollar amount of $235,174.21. We do have experience working with Iowa Signal on past traffic signal projects here in the community of Waukee. They've built probably 95, if not more, percent of the traffic signals in our community. So they certainly stand up to the ability and have the competency to complete it successfully. So staff and the engineer have no concerns with their abilities and would recommend awarding the contract to them in that dollar amount up there. One additional piece of information I'd share is that this project is a joint project between the community school district and Waukee. So there is an agreement in place where there's 50% of the costs, both construction, engineering, et cetera, are recovered from the school district to the city at the conclusion and acceptance of the project. So happy to take any questions. But again, staff recommends approving the project, Iowa Signal out of Grimes, Iowa, for $235,174.21. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Told you.
I know. All right. Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
And item I1 is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I2, consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance, city of Waukee, Iowa, by rezoning certain property from KRC to KMU/PD1, a parcel known as Kettlestone Central South, Lot 2, Lot 5. This is a second reading.
Move to approve the second reading of the ordinance and title only.
Second. Thank you. Andy?
Good evening, Mayor, Clerk, and council members. This is the second reading for Kettlestone Central South, Lot 2, Lot 5. Proposal for a five-story mixed-use building located south of Southeast West Town Parkway and west of Southeast Glacier Trail. Staff recommends approval of the second consideration. I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions?
Can you refresh my memory? This was the one that wouldn't fit where it was supposed to fit, right? So were we doing the zonings that it could be slightly further south from the curve?
Yes, yep. That's, that's one of the reasons for the, for the PD is, yes, the existing easements encumber about the north 22 to 25 feet of the property. Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Please vote.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I3, consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance, city of Waukee, Iowa, by rezoning certain property from KRR to KMS Stacktie, a parcel to be known as Kettlestone Lakes Apartments. This is also a second reading. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the second reading of the ordinance and title only.
Second. Thank you. Andy?
All right. So this is about 12.18 acres in area, located generally south of Southeast Ashworth Road and west of Grand Prairie Parkway. This is the 210-unit apartment project that is proposed. And the proposed density of the project is just under 18 acres per, 18 units per acre, excuse me, for the proposed project. Staff is recommending approval of the second consideration for Kettlestone Lakes Apartments. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Agenda item I4, consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance, city of Waukee, Iowa, by rezoning certain property from A1 to R4, a parcel to be known as Schuman Townhomes. This is also a second reading. Can I get a, or can I get a motion?
Move to approve the second reading of the ordinance and title only.
Second.
Melissa?
The property is located north of Northwest Douglas Parkway and west of Northwest 10th Street. It contains a total of 3.75 acres. It's outlined in blue on the screen. The proposal is to rezone this for a small town home development containing approximately 30 units. I think I have the concept plan in here, so 30 units total. Staff is recommending approval of the second reading of the rezoning, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I5, for Hope Springs, Hope Springs, Lot 1. I5A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving preliminary plat. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Melissa?
I will go ahead and present on 5A and 5B at the same time, and I will leave C for Andy. The owner and applicant is Hope K Farms LLC. The property is located south of Hickman Road and west of 11th Street. It contains 81.87 acres. The property is zoned C1, R3, and R4. The preliminary plat includes a total of 14 lots, 12 of them for commercial development along Hickman, and then two for townhome and multifamily residential development. The plat includes extensions of 11th Street, 17th Street, and Maple Street. A 10-foot wide trail will be installed along the west side of 17th Street, and then five-foot wide sidewalks will be provided along all other sides of all streets. Both public and private utilities are shown on the plat. Stormwater detention will be provided in the northeast corner of Lot 14. You can kind of see it outlined on the screen. It's this portion right here, so that's where stormwater detention will be, and that will be privately owned and maintained by a future homeowners association. Landscape buffers will be provided between the different zoning districts and then also along 17th Street and Maple Street. The public improvements for Plat 1, I believe I put the construction drawings in here so you can see it a little bit. So these are the construction drawings for Plat 1. It includes improvements to Hickman Road, which includes an eastbound right turn lane and a westbound left turn lane onto 17th Street. It includes public utilities, grading, and then also construction of 17th Street and Maple Street between 17th Street and where it will end to the east with the Commonwealth Place Development. So it's kind of the boulder lines on the screen. So this portion and then this portion will be included with that plat. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat for Hope Springs and the construction drawings for Hope Springs Plat 1, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I5B, consideration of approval of a resolution approving construction drawings. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
I have nothing further to add. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I5C, consideration of approval of a resolution approving a development agreement with Hope K Farms LLC. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Andy?
All right. So this is a very similar development agreement that's proposed here before you tonight that the city has done with development to the south as well as development along University Avenue. Primarily, it relates to installation of some temporary improvements along 20th Street, formerly known as T Avenue, a 24, or 24-foot-wide asphalt overlay in lieu of doing the permanent improvements now to, to 20th Street. So essentially, the developer would pay the city the future costs for those permanent improvements, and the city would keep those funds until such a time that the city would do a project for those permanent improvements. Those payments would be made on a per-acre basis with each phase of the development. In addition, this agreement has provisions related to an existing water main that the city previously installed for reimbursement of that, of, of the installation of that water main that they would have otherwise been responsible for. Staff is recommending approval of the development agreement with Hope K Farms LLC, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I6 for the South 60, I6A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving preliminary plat. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Melissa?
Okay. The owner and applicant is Jerry's Homes, Inc. The property is located north of Hickman Road and east of North, sorry, northwest 20th Street. It contains 61.83 acres in area. The property is zoned R2, R2 PD1, R3, and R4. I can kind of show you where that is on the screen. So we got some R2, R2 PD1, R3 parkland, and then R4 down here in the southeast corner. The preliminary plat identifies a total of 106 lots for single-family residential development. A total of 61 lots are zoned R2, and then the remaining 45 lots are smaller single-family lots zoned R2 with a planned development overlay. The preliminary plat includes three outlots. Outlet X is for a future townhome development. Outlet Y will be dedicated to the city for parkland, and then Outlet Z is for future multifamily development. Several landscape buffers will be provided between the different zoning districts and then also along northwest 20th Street. The plat will include an extension of northwest 17th Street. In addition, multiple new public streets will be provided. A 10-foot wide trail will be provided along the east side of northwest 20th Street, and then also northwest 17th Street. Five-foot wide sidewalks will be constructed along all other sides of all streets with individual lot development. Public utilities will be extended throughout the plat. Stormwater detention will be provided with a detention pond. Let me see if I have it on here. So there's the pond. It's located within the southeast corner of the plat within Outlet X. Parkland dedication will be provided with the, a combination of the dedication of Outlet Y, and then also a fee in lieu of land dedication for the remainder. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat, subject to remaining staff comments, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Just a quick part question. That's right along the bike trail. Would there be the opportunity to actually connect that? So...
We discussed that. I know it's hard to get that connection there for, with Dallas County.
Okay.
But we did talk about it. There's a potential, it just kind of depends how that goes in the future for us.
Okay. It'd be neat if it did.
All right. Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crown?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I6B, consideration of approval of a resolution approving development agreement with Jerry's Homes.
Move to approve.
Second. Andy?
All right. This one's a little different. So staff has worked with the developer and the city attorney to craft a development agreement related to the South 60 development that Melissa just presented on. So as you're all aware, the city previously undertook some improvements to northwest 20th Street in conjunction with our, you can tell how old this aerial photo is because our public safety building's not on it. But the city undertook a significant amount of public improvements associated to northwest 20th Street,